We're going to start back up with preservation items. We're going to public meeting item number one, which is an application for an advisory report at 475 Brielle Avenue, the New York City Farm Colony Seaview Hospital Historic District, docket number sixteen dash two-three-zero-zero, block nineteen fifty-five, lot one. And this is a complex of Dutch colonial and colonial revival style buildings designed by Renwick, Aspenwall, and Owen, William Flanagan, Frank H. Quinby, Raymond F. Ameral, Al Meral, William L. Rouse, Charles B. Mares, and built between nineteen oh three to nineteen thirty-eight. The application is to demolish buildings. And item number two, for the same address, is a binding report for an application to stabilize ruined buildings, construct additions and new buildings, and alter the landscape.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Charlie Bond with Preservation Staff. This is an application for work at the site of the former New York City Farm Colony in Staten Island, located in the New York City Farm Colony Seaview Hospital Historic District. This is an application to redevelop the site, including demolition of select buildings, additions to historic buildings, new construction, de-escalation of roads and pathways, or other landscape alterations. The project team has returned today for revisions to the design of the new clubhouse building, and has provided additional architectural details for the additions, and proposed new construction based on your comments. And Pablo Van Groot, the architects, will begin today's presentation.
Hi, Commissioners. I'm here with Tim Boyle, and I'm so happy to be presenting part of this application. Just want to start by thanking you for your comments the last time, because I think that they have helped us make the building, the plan, much better, and made some improvements. We have, as Charlie said, added material to help understand the existing proposal for some of the buildings, and we made one major changes to one of the buildings, your suggestion, the clubhouse. In addition, we have also brought on board, we will be bringing on board rather, a professional photographer to document the existing buildings prior to demolition, and document part of the site. And of course, that will create an archive that will be available for research in the future. Similarly, we have scoured the site and found, we had known about this, but there were certain pillars that were associated with the entrance to Potter's Field. So we are going to be keeping them within the landscape of Potter's Field, in that particular area. I just want to say that, you know, our, this is a long-term project. We're probably going to be working on this for over a year, or maybe two years. And our firm is committed to continuing to work on the project until we take this to the building department. And working with staff. Staff has been amazing. I've never, I haven't worked with them on that side. I knew they were intelligent and knowledgeable from being here with you, but just working with them and getting their input, they have helped us get to this point today. So the other, only other thing I wanted to mention is that there is, I guess mostly for your assurance, there is a Phase One archaeological report, assessment report, that has been prepared. And the assessment report includes a, what's it called, an avoidance, what is the, avoidance and unanticipated, monitoring and unanticipated discoveries plan, which will lay in place the guidelines, the procedural guidelines that will be required as the construction takes off. And included in there will be requirements for some of the general contractors to take a training session, and also for an archaeologist to be present on site. What that will do is that if there are any unanticipated discoveries that are, that are found, it will ensure that there will be, we will be able to protect and preserve those features. So I think that that's my introduction for the time for now. I think when we go over this kind of quote paraphrase, Eugène Emmanuel Biallemidou, who is the restorer of Notre Dame in Paris, and he basically said that restoration was a means to reestablish a building, in this case, our site, to a completed state which probably never in fact existed at any time in the past. And this site is a site that is more abundant, I would say, in many ways. And so what we have been trying to do really here is create a unity, a stylistic unity for all of the buildings, and recreate this into a living place, as opposed to a place that is vacant. So.
Oh, the point?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm just going to go through a summary of the presentation last time to bring us up to, then we can show you the new information that we brought, the new data and some of the design work. Looking at the current state of the project site, the former New York City Farm Colony is within a New York City Farm Colony Seaview Historic District, on the west side of Brielle Avenue, Seaview Hospital campus. East of Brielle Avenue includes various historic buildings, including a six-story Seaview Hospital and Women's Pavilion, designed by Raymond Almeral. On our site, there are eleven significant structures. There are four in a state of ruin, and seven in a serious and potentially dangerous state of disrepair. Historically, the site has been a hamlet and a campus, existing together without conflict, and our concept plan continues that. These master plans, the earliest dating to nineteen oh nine, are representative of the era of development from which there still remains extent buildings. Collectively, they illustrate that there was a continued history of master planning and site development strategy, which proposed new construction and additions with a mix of building retention and demolition. Our reuse and redevelopment approach consists of three interconnected components: preservation and adaptive reuse, sensitive site-specific urban planning and landscape design, and building design. The preservation and adaptive reuse strategy includes dismantling of ruins in critical condition, reuse of materials, and the rehabilitation of existing buildings, and the construction of new buildings and landscape, and repurposing of six existing structures. Working together, the architects, structural engineers, historic preservation consultant, and materials specialists documented the condition of all significant structures on the site. The existing conditions assessments identified the extent of building deterioration and assisted in the development of a preservation strategy and master plan. Existing structures, vacant since nineteen seventy-five, have been categorized as either critical, poor to critical, or poor. The team has identified the structures proposed for reuse, ruins proposed to be dismantled, a structure proposed to be removed, and a ruin to be stabilized. This set of photographs represents the conditions encountered by our team. Dormitory for male help, completed nineteen oh eight, is the second oldest remaining structure on the site. Designed by Raymond Almeral, the structure is in ruins. The roof, first and second floors, and porticoes have all collapsed. Debris is accumulated to the height of the second story, and the building is generally in a wreck. Women's dormitory five and six, on your right, completed in nineteen twelve and designed by Raymond Almeral, is in poor to critical condition. The stone walls and foundation are in fair condition. The roof, roof framing floors, and several interior walls have collapsed. Most of the windows and doors are in poor condition or destroyed. The decorative wood entries are in fair condition. Dorm five and six is a bit deceiving in that the end walls at the north and south end are generally intact, while much of the remainder of the building is in ruin. Insane Pavilion Nurses Residence, designed by Raymond Almeral, completed nineteen ten with an overwhelming and uncompromising nineteen thirty-two addition, designed by Adolf Martin. The exterior walls of the pavilion are in fair condition, with some small brick. The brick of the addition is in poor condition. The parapets are wrecked, failed. The windows are also in poor condition. The shop building, on your right, completed nineteen fifteen, is in poor to critical condition overall. The exterior walls are in fair condition. Most of the windows are missing, and the wood frame roof has collapsed entirely. Dormitories A, B, C, and D, these were designed by Charles Myers and completed in nineteen thirty-four, are generally in poor condition. The exterior brick walls are painted over with graffiti and covered by poison ivy and other invasives. Water infiltration occurs as all of the parapets were vandalized, and trees grow on those edges. The brick exterior of nine D is heavily damaged and particularly poor condition. The floors are sound and in fair condition. Most of the windows and all of the doors are missing, and the standing seam copper cladding has been removed from all of the buildings. The entries are in fair condition. The interiors suffer the effects of vandalism and decades of water infiltration. The interior of nine B has been more heavily vandalized than the others. The structural engineering report, New York City Farm Colony Staten Island, New York Property Condition Assessment, identifies dormitory nine V as being the worst overall condition of the four Charles Myers dormitory buildings. Men's dormitory one and two, completed nineteen oh four, is the oldest extent structure and survives in a state of ruin. Designed by Renwick, Aspenwall, and Owen, the structure is the nucleus around which the installation grew. The original gambrel roof is long gone, destroyed by fire before the district was designated, and its replacement collapsed. Noting the photo at the bottom right Pablo referred to, existing pillars or piers assumed to be associated with the entrance to Potter's Field would be maintained as a site element. Eight places on the site: entrances, place of remembrance for Potter's Field, the residents' community garden, the knoll, pond, overlook, and Olmstead Green have all been designated to receive salvage material from the historic building. Our master plan proposes a mix of building rehabilitation and restoration, additions, and new construction, referencing the site's various development phases. The plan draws from the existing buildings and their location on the site to set the framework for the proposed development, informing the new building designs and additions. Roughly based on the neo-traditional planning principles, the plan establishes a walking village-like setting with a core area, an inner ring, and perimeter green belt. Cottage and carriage houses reflect the site's early development phase, when smaller scales cottage buildings were arranged along the north-south axis. The flats, which are in the eastern portion of the core, along with the rehabilitated dorm buildings, reference the nineteen thirties' development phase. The plan maintains the existing Potter's Field as undisturbed green space, and strengthens the site's green edges, building upon adjacent public recreational amenities with park-like features, including arrested ruins, outdoor, arrested ruins, outdoor seating knoll, restored pond. The plan utilizes a new ring road as a design feature to maintain development closer to the site's core, and then creates a green core, which we have named Olmstead Green, to anchor buildings and maintain a tree canopy through the center of the site. Parking is located within buildings, and in individual landscape parking areas buffered with additional landscaping. The plan acknowledges the commercial component of the former campus, providing commercial and community facility uses along the Brielle Avenue edge in a very publicly accessible location. It also incorporates sustainable approach with regard to building and site design, including bioswales and rain gardens at the lower end, at the west of the site, and provides a residence' community garden, restoring the feature of agriculture to the site. Utilizing the site's natural topography, locating more substantial buildings in areas of lower elevation, we've maintained a closer height relationship across campus. Looking to existing tree growth, we maintain the built environment that seeks to remain within the context of the existing tree canopy. Looking at our planning concept diagram, our core is our central park-like village square, surrounded by visually and physically connected ring of residences. This ring is in turn enclosed by a perimeter green belt with destination buildings and activities programmed: retail, clubhouse, Potter's Field, storage, arrested ruins, knoll, and pond. This section of the historic district is more abundant. No inhabitants, no community, no connectivity, isolated and engulfed by invasives. We see the master plan as the next reality, a contemporary era indebted to the past yet current. It is anew, built on foundations of the old, a site resurrected, reinvented as a living, active residential community. The master plan's green edges and green core make up a significant network of open space accessible to the public, consistent with the master plan concept. The undisturbed green of the Potter's Field remains. Public accessible open space also includes green spaces accessory to the commercial and community facility uses at the Brielle Avenue edge. The experience for the users and visitors should be that of an interconnected community whose focus is a town common, with short walking distances between buildings and between residences and activity. The circulation diagram illustrates how the pieces are connected, both internally and to the outside. Every building connected, vehicular movement, bicycles, pedestrians, access to the site at east and west, north and south. And our core, Olmstead Green, the representative center, is anchored by the oval having a focus of blue stone walking surface surrounding a decorative fountain. And with that, I'll ask Pablo to add some building design.
So just to recap, we're not going to go over everything, because I think we presented the last time, but just to let you know that there are refinements to some of the buildings. We've included them here, and we've made the, actually, one building, the clubhouse, has been redesigned. As a recap, we have, these are the two eras that we're responding to, the principal eras. This is the mid-twentieth century era, and then this is the early twentieth century era. This is characterized by cottage-style dormitories, Dutch gambrel, Dutch revival style, rather, with gambrel roofs, and then this is characterized by very, very large institutional-style dormitory And what we are proposing is, for those particular buildings, is a series of infills to be able to utilize those buildings. This plan is just showing the relationships a little bit clearer, trying to understand where the axis lines are drawn, and the kinds of east-west relationships and north-south relationships. But what is important to keep in mind about this, as I stated the last, the last time, is really the commonalities that all of these buildings have, and formal qualities that these buildings have. The east-west orientation, the north-south axis, the fact that these are buildings in the round, the fact that they all have an east-west entry as well as a north-south entrance, they're very, very symmetrical buildings. They have elements that are repeated regardless of the style, they have elements that are repeated throughout, such as porticos and other features. This is dormitory nine A buildings, these are the ones nine A, nine C, and D that we are keeping, and you can see the east-west entrance in this instance. Here we have the north face of that, of that building, which is where we're proposing the infill. And here's just the detail of the corner, corner of that, of that building, showing the coins. Now, we're replicating the pattern of the coins, but in reverse order. We're not putting coins in our new building, we're putting raised, a raised brick band around that. Just, we have a lot of, a lot of old drawings that give us information on the details and the actual profiles that we are replicating for this, part of this building. We did an analysis of the horizontal, the vertical elements, the window patterns, the proportions, and the building heights as well. And as what, we also looked at the types of materials that were there, and the type of coursing that existed. And this is the existing floor plan. I mentioned before, this is a very efficient, but single-purpose building. It's very difficult to turn into residential uses in its current configuration. We have the midsection is twenty-eight feet, the wings are twenty-six feet, and then we have end pavilions, which is another common feature that we have there, the orangreys at this point. So it's a V-shaped plant. We're adding to it at the northern part of the building. We are creating a corridor that corridor will preserve as blind, the existing facade as blind windows in this section, and then those will be replicated on the northern part of that. We are also adding a second floor and second floor units, and a third floor for two units or either units or it'll be mechanical space. We haven't yet decided what that will be. This is the existing building, it's a very long building, it's two hundred and ninety feet long. And in elevation, this is where we're adding. We're adding to the top floor, we're adding above the orangreys, we're adding a half a story at either side, we're adding an entrance on the north side, and then the rear, or rather, the south, the north elevation, I'm sorry, the north elevation will have an addition as well, and these are the orangreys. This is a diagram of the north elevation. We have connecting elements over here, connecting elements on that, on that side. We've kept the same window pattern that we determined was, was, was in the, in the original north face. Obviously, we changed the windows. And we have some of the sections, this is the orangreay, and we are replicating exactly the corners that exist on the building, thanks to the drawings that we, that we have, with the, with the half-story addition there. In the other instance where we have a new, I don't know if this is very visible, but we're essentially picking up where the, the cornice line is, and where the water table is as well, but it will be masonry extended. The only part that will be glass are these two elements at the end, which will be sort of a curtain wall, metal and glass system there. And you can see this in better clearer over here. We are showing this simply for the color of the brick. It's not, doesn't show very well, but there's quite a variety of color. We're going to be selecting an intermediate color to replicate.
You say you're selecting an intermediate color to replicate. Is it your intention that when you're looking at this and you're looking at that, they look the same, or they look different?
This and that would look different.
And the intention is that that's going to be lighter?
That would be lighter. Right, right, because this is a very dark building. And so this is, again, just to show the main entrance and the extension above the orangreay.
I'm sorry, before you go to the next building, can we just go back to the, so is there a reason why you didn't want to treat the addition, which I, I think actually it nestles in very nicely into the building, and I can understand the reason to make this, the dormitories more usable, to increase its depth so that you have a corridor in the center. But I am curious to know whether it was intentional to have the new piece that we see on the front to be stripped down of perhaps the level of detail that is there in the existing building? Because, just in terms of the windows and its articulation?
This is the new piece that you're, right?
Right, that's a new piece, but this big, yeah.
This is the front.
Yeah, but if you look at the north, yeah. Right, so that portion is, is sort of stripped down compared to the existing building, is that right? That was intentional?
That was intentional.
Okay.
We wanted to make sure that we created a contrast, but at the same time, we wanted to reference the existing, the existing building. And that's why we've also introduced this element.
Right.
Here to create a break from, from, from the, from the existing building.
So it's, it looks like a contemporary, modern enlargement?
Yes. And in fact, because this faces the interior, the core space, it, we felt that the part of the design facing the ring road should be more in keeping with the character of the existing building, down to reproducing many of, many of the details. Felt that this was difficult to create a new and modern addition to that at this place, but I, I think it's appropriate that the, at the back end of the building, it's, it's out.
Yes, Michael.
Along with north elevation, on the, on the existing building you're adding, basically you're, you're building a new manseur that connects the existing roofs on either end, right?
Right, and that's also difficult here.
So on the, on the south elevation, you're using like a shed dormer with an individual window, and on this north elevation, it's a wider shed dormer, or is that a sloped glass?
It's, it's, it's a sloped glass. These are intended to be almost like studio windows. The idea is that this faces north. Again, we haven't yet completely resolved the, the slope of that, we have to study that further, and we'll be doing that with, with staff in, in section. But these are intended to provide light, north light, kind of studio, studio windows, where these are intended to relate much closer to the existing elevation.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions on this design? Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So now, the last time I presented this, we talked about precedents. This is the precedence, the design precedent that we're looking also on the site of the historic district, but it's across the street in the Seaview part of the campus. This is the women's pavilion, and this will be, this is kind of the design precedent for the flats that we have, our six-story buildings. And in particular, the very broad generous corners with a coffered underside, and the fact that it's, there's a lot of decorative elements happening around that, that point, plus brackets, and also this relationship, having a glass and metal assembly next to masonry construction. Regarding the cottages, we're using the existing dormitories, the dormitory one and two and three and four, which were demolished, and you can see the cross, the end gables and the cross gables at the, at the end pavilions, the east and west entrances, and the kind of, the material here, the combination, it's hard to see, but there is brick in there too. The scale that we're borrowing is this scale from the, from the shop building. Now, as to the carriage houses, Commissioner Goldblum had a comment about the carriage houses the, the last time. We are indeed being inspired by drawings of unbilled carriage houses, because they were designed by the same architect that designed the, Charles Myers, who designed the dormitory buildings. However, in doing further research, we note that there were garages on the site, both in the early period and in the later period. And a carriage house is not an alien typology to either one of those eras. So we feel very comfortable that if we have to introduce a new typology, we have, we have, we have history on our side. So here's the, a, a, an updated, slightly updated rendering of, of the, of the flats. In plan, you have the east-west axis, you have a north, a south entrance. Our plan also begins to engage in this, in the southern part of the building, begins to engage across the Olmstead Green, begins to engage the dormitory buildings. We have introduced a series of setbacks at the fifth floor, and also at the sixth floor to reduce the bulk. We are also proposing to have a green roof just along, along the edge of the building. There will be some solar panels here, and in, in addition to that, we're, we're looking into capturing rainwater, because we have a large site, there'll be a lot of landscaping, so that will be utilized to irrigate the, the site.
How many are there of these, are there?
These, there are three buildings, three of these type of buildings, and if you go back, I'll point to where they, where they are. Yeah. The three are, are there in a row, and these are the dormitory buildings that are across Olmstead Green from them. Okay, so since the last time, we basically have accentuated the belt course here, because that was an important feature that we didn't really speak about the last, the last time. The belt course is intended to be at the same height, or similar height, as the cornice line of dormitories nine, nine A. line of dormitories nine, nine A, B, C, and D, and we've also introduced a few brick elements, raised brick elements to align with this, the raised brick elements over at the ends of the south elevation. These are the parts that project out towards you. This is a detail of the top of the building, the cornice, where we have a decorative glaze brick pattern introduced there. And this is, I think, important because we have determined, in our design, we were very conscious of relating to the existing building. We know that the scales are different. We know that these scales are not necessarily, do not necessarily match, but this building sits across the way, much further away than actually shown here, but these are the parts that begin to engage, this U shape begins to be engaged on the other side. And when you bring them together, our building, the flats, are in part contained by the existing dormitory nine buildings. And you could see also some of the relationships here, where we have the water tables, and we have the belt course, and the cornice aligning there. And just more details that we didn't have before, showing the relationship of the new raised brick with the other facades. Partial elevation to the south, and partial elevation of the north, the main entrance of the north. Here's a section through that, and here is another section through the top part showing the cornice. And here is the cornice enlarged. We have, it's press metal cornice, there will be modulations and brackets introduced. Has partial elevations of the east and west, showing, this is the entrance. When it becomes an entrance, which is right over here, this is what you would see, you would have a balcony on top of that, and then this is the very top of the window bay. Materials haven't changed since the last time, the Norman-sized brick and iron spots, and then we have a sample of the glaze brick pattern that we want to introduce up here in the cornice band.
Can we go back to that elevation?
Sure.
And what...
Which one?
Yeah, this one is fine. So there's, how many different bricks are there?
It's the same brick, it's just...
Two different colors?
Different colors, yeah. It's the same brick. We want to distinguish the main field from the corners. Again, that's sort of the device to introduce, to change the scale of this very, this long building, which is 180 feet long.
Right, and this portion that's in the center, that, that is just, that just seems like it's a sort of a metal frame thing, I'm not sure.
It's metal and glass.
Metal and glass, okay.
This is a projecting metal and glass assembly, similar to the ends at the east-western end, and it also happens in the south. And that was what I mentioned before, recalling the women's pavilion, which had a metal and glass component, vertical metal and glass component there, contrasted against the brick masonry.
And this in-between piece, you've shown some sort of markings over there, is that some kind of brick articulation?
These...
Yeah, those.
Why don't we go back to... Yeah, right, this is the south elevation, this is the central section of the south elevation. We want to create this sort of continuity, but we didn't want to carry that base, the expression of that base throughout, so we raised the brick only in certain instances here, and then diminished as we go up, there's actually much less of that. So this is the field, that will be one tone of brick, and then this will be a slightly different tone, but it will be all matching brick.
And this brick is intentionally different from the brick that you're using on the other side?
Yes, yes. The other side is intended to match, although not quite match, but closer in spirit to the existing brick. This is actually a different sized brick as well.
But in some ways, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, that since in the other building, which is the dormitory buildings, you have already two bricks, and now you're going to have two more different colors, and I mean, you may want to find some choice of brick that sort of unifies the two, which is the contemporary brick that you're using, and that can tie with this building.
Yeah, you know what we were really concerned about is creating, because these are three large buildings, right, that we're introducing, is creating the type of uniformity that would almost feel as oppressive, overwhelming, and we really think that introducing variety, as much variety as possible, it's still all brick, it's still masonry, but there are slight differences, and in fact, in the cottages, when we see, we've introduced yet a slightly different variant on the brick color. Again, we think that that variety is important on a site like this.
Addie?
Just a question about the reset, are the windows flush with that brick, or is there any relief, is there any recess?
No, there recess, there recess.
Because it's hard to read that at all.
Why don't we see if we go to the section, when this shows, not these sections? Yeah, you can see it right over here, this is the line of the window, and then you see the line of the bricks, it's about six inches behind, the window begins six inches behind, and the glass is actually a little bit further than that.
But recess was not your objective, I mean, a depth in the facade was not your objective. It seems like a flush facade was more of your objective from a design perspective.
A flush facade was the objective in this section of the building, the metal and glass construction. We definitely want a shadow line in this area.
It's not apparent, I mean, it's not texturally sensed, right?
Right, I think maybe it's just in the rendering, but you're right, the rendering makes it look very flat, so not that the...
It is about six inches to the window frame.
Maybe it's partly that, and in fact, the window itself is drawn in sort of a singular line and has, you can't tell whether there are elements to it, so it seems like it's almost oversimplified.